Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the August ninth Princeton Regular Board Meeting of the Princeton Board of Education. I now call the meeting to order. Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Dr. Hawkins.
Here.
Mrs. Wyder.
Here.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Here.
Mrs. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Simons.
Present.
Please join me now with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
It has been moved in second that the agenda stand is presented. Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mrs. Wyder.
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland.
Yes.
Mrs. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Simons.
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins.
Yes. Motion passes. And now, the first item on our agenda is recognition of visitors. Mr. Burton.
Thank you so much. And what an evening this is gonna be. So, the summer vacation is awesome for people, right? They go on vacation, they spend time with friends. And then there's a unique group of young ladies that decided that it wasn't enough. They wanted to get better, they wanted to do something different. And through GE, great business partner of ours, he created a program called Innovation Girls. And we're gonna hear a lot more about that, but, and when you hear about some of the pitches, now, we can't really go real, real deep, but I'll tell ya, I had an opportunity to be there, and I heard about this very creative way of packaging paper chips. Also, creative ways to save the environment. And the kids did a wonderful job, and I would like to call up, right now, Richard Zurich, as well as Rita David, who's, they're both from Innovation Girls. If you could come up here, right now, David and Rita, thank you so much. And then also, Mirabelle Too Cortez, she's GE Engineering, and she's with the, also with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, and we have from the Board of Education a certificate for each one. So let's give them a big round of applause.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I am so honored to be among the ladies and of Princeton schools, the innovators of Princeton schools. They baffled us all with their ingenuity. I wanna say thank you to the board who approved the program for the summer of Innovation Girls. And I wanna thank the parents of the young girls who went ahead and against all odds to bring them to school and make sure that we're on time, every time. The technology worked very well for us, we did it virtually. So thank you, everybody, for the setup and for going along with it. We believe in the ingenuity of the youth among us. We believe, just like, I'm not sure if any of you know, the black walnut tree, which is very popular in the Midwest. And the black walnut tree puts out a syrup that is much more delicious and nutritious than the maple syrup. Yet, we walk around these trees in our neighborhoods and we ignore them for their amazing syrup that is as gold as the syrup that comes from Canada. So, this is the same thing with our youth. We don't really notice what we have in our midst and what they're capable of. What they showed us, what the young ladies at Princeton showed us was something quite incredible. I think, I think, Tom, you've described it very well, the, what we've seen as final presentations. Surprised everyone, and really, for me, it was, it was a beautiful succession of planning that they went through. When they started, I think we wanna hear a little bit from the young girls, when they started, they didn't realize that. They were embarking on a program that's actually given to the graduate level at the University of Cincinnati. And they absorbed this program of systematic inventive thinking, and they ran with it to be able to innovate ten times better and be able to run with new ideas for sustainable concepts. I'm so proud of what they've done. I'd love to hear from them as well today. I'm gonna present them with the certificates. So, these are certificates of achievement from the school, and thank you Princeton School for organizing this. So, Ariana Bailey, Annette Flores. Come on up. Annette Flores, thank you for being here. Thank you. Jennifer Mendoza Lopez. Victoria Smith. Kaia Toller. Jennifer Barrera. Rejoice, we miss you. Isabel Rodriguez. Give him a big round of applause. Carmen Ramirez Bolanos. Sofia Morales Valley. Fatumata Saw. Darielle's Ortiz. Big round of applause for all of it.
Oh, please, please.
Just two minutes from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and the Society of Hispanic Professional and Engineers Girls, I really wanted to congratulate you for all the efforts. As Mr. Burton mentioned, every, while all of other kids were on vacation and summertime, you were working pretty hard. I know it because my two daughters are one of the leaders for the, the young leaders for this, which I was so impressed. Everybody, I'm gonna say this because I have to say it, everybody thinks that us minorities are not smart enough to do this, but we did it. You did it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. This is just really exciting for us to see these young ladies do the, be exposed to this program and do so well. We just really, really appreciate your helping our girls to go to a different place. So, thank you.
Dr. Hawkins, if I may, just, I just wanna add a couple things. So, just so everybody knows, if you've seen the TV shark, the show Shark Tank, right? So, that's essentially what this was. And I think that there's at least two winners out there that have an Oculus, if you could stand up, if you don't mind. We'll give them a big round of applause. And I'm gonna let one of the two of you come up real quick and explain what that is and how you want it. So, one of the two, alright, that's not a shock. Here we go. Says you come up, just introduce yourself, just like you did that first day when we were having pizza.
Hi guys, I'm Ariana Bailey. This is an Oculus, and I won it with my teammate when we came up with an invention for a new nail polish, so it won't make young girls sick when they put it on because of the ingredients in it. So, we are gonna change the ingredients inside the nail polish to make a better nail polish, so girls can still have their pretty nails without getting sick. This is a VR system. We're gonna use it to design stuff.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Excellent.
So, the energy was just unbelievable, and so the nail polish was really fascinating, and that was something that during the presentation, it really gripped people. And again, other presentations too, that were fantastic, I just remember the potato chip packaging and going through that presentation. So, again, thank you so very much, GE Aviation, and especially, we know that we wanna bring this back, we will support this, right, Board?
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Burton, you said there was just one other person that had the Oculus? Can we hear that story too?
Yeah, so, it's the same story, but if you'd like to come up, okay, same, same product, but sure, come on up if you want.
I didn't know if it was a different outcome or anything. Yeah. Do you wanna come up?
Okay.
Okay. Alright, alright, that's fine. Thank you, this is fantastic, and we're just really excited to hear, and yes, we will definitely support this program again. It's just really exciting to see you guys have that opportunity and do so well with it. So, thank you again. Another round of applause for the Innovation Girls. Excellent. Thank you. And of course, you were invited to stay, we don't want to, but if you wanted to go, this is like a place that might work, but if not, make yourself comfortable and leave whenever it's convenient for you.
If you don't move now, it's one more hour you have to sit there.
Not necessarily true. I did wanna check in, we skipped over our, make sure we had no visitors? Did we have any papers?
Ms. Roddy, do we have any visitors? No, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Alright, then we're able to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Simons, did you have copies or something for us, or different copies?
I only made one copy.
Oh, okay. Alright. The next item is the approval of the consent agenda, guess we can have a motion, or if there's questions or something, we can address that. Have a motion first?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
It's been moved. Can I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any questions? No questions at this time? Okay, then, Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Alright, next item is District Business, Approval of the June 2021 Financial Report. Mrs. Pedder. Well, can we have a motion first?
I move to approve the June 2021 financial reports as presented.
It's been moved in second. Mrs. Pedder, would you like to elaborate?
This is our final monthly report for the fiscal year, and just the point of note on the first page would be that in comparison to the forecast we approved in May and the end of the year, the revenue was 273,000 ahead, and the expenses were 340,000 behind, so that netted us a better position by 614,000. That's the final report for fiscal year '21. We are having some fun with our new state software, we should be close tomorrow morning, I'll have the July report at the next board meeting. You also will have, you also have an update of the COVID expenses in your packet, I've added on the SRR2, SRR3 grants to this, so we had a little bit of spending in SRR2, and we can track those through the rest of those fun, that fun life. So, those are your updates for there. There is an additional item on your financial packet, and this is a new requirement that annually the board must improve the commercial paper investments. This became effective on April 12th of this year through House Bill 197 and Senate Bill 276. So, attached, you have the commercial paper purchases and the interest revenue from those. And that has to happen once a year now, then I have to submit it to the state auditor. And that is the financial report.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
I just really wanna emphasize this for all those in person, but also watching online. Just to reiterate, that we not only brought in a little bit more money, we also saved money. Now, when you look at, people can look at SRR funds, which remember is COVID relief funds, for those that needed a little reminder, but even though we hired to address some of learning loss this summer, and we did a lot of other things, $340,000 because of being efficient, because of the work that Ms. Pedder has done, the work that our administrative team has done in terms of hiring practices, whatever, that, this is unreal. When you look at this time, the efficiency, and I really wanna drive that home to everybody, 'cause even though we have money coming in with SRR funds or whatever, we're still being very efficient, we're being as lean as possible, this is a great report, and Ms. Pedder, if you could do that every single month, we'd appreciate that.
Yes, thank you for that. Any questions or other comments about the financial report? Mrs. Pedder, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Alright, next item is District Business, Approval of the June 2021 Financial Report. Mrs. Pedder. Well, can we have a motion first?
I move to approve the June 2021 financial reports as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Mrs. Pedder, would you like to elaborate?
This is our final monthly report for the fiscal year, and just the point of note on the first page would be that in comparison to the forecast we approved in May and the end of the year, the revenue was 273,000 ahead, and the expenses were 340,000 behind, so that netted us a better position by 614,000. That's the final report for fiscal year '21. We are having some fun with our new state software, we should be closed tomorrow morning, I'll have the July report at the next board meeting. You also will have, you also have an update of the COVID expenses in your packet, I've added on the SRR2, SRR3 grants to this, so we had a little bit of spending in SRR2, and we can track those through the rest of those fun, that fun life. So, those are your updates for there. There is an additional item on your financial packet, and this is a new requirement that annually the board must improve the commercial paper investments. This became effective on April 12th of this year through House Bill 197 and Senate Bill 276. So, attached, you have the commercial paper purchases and the interest revenue from those. And that has to happen once a year now, then I have to submit it to the state auditor. And that is the financial report.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
I just really wanna emphasize this for all those in person, but also watching online. Just to reiterate, that we not only brought in a little bit more money, we also saved money. Now, when you look at, people can look at SRR funds, which remember is COVID relief funds, for those that needed a little reminder, but even though we hired to address some of learning loss this summer, and we did a lot of other things, $340,000 because of being efficient, because of the work that Ms. Pedder has done, the work that our administrative team has done in terms of hiring practices, or whatever, that, this is unreal. When you look at this time, the efficiency, and I really wanna drive that home to everybody, 'cause even though we have money coming in with SRR funds or whatever, we're still being very efficient, we're being as lean as possible, this is a great report, and Ms. Pedder, if you could do that every single month, we'd appreciate that.
Yes, thank you for that. Any questions or other comments about the financial report? Mrs. Pedder, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
And the motion passes. And we look forward, we will be going to OSBA in November, and so, we feel like our business is in good hands with you as delegate and alternate, so thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Approval of Excess Workers' Compensation and Employer's Liability Insurance.
I move to approve the excess workers' compensation and employer's liability insurance policy effective 8/1/21 through 8/1/22. Second.
It has been moved in second. Questions or comments?
This is, the district is self-funded for their workers' comp program, so we have to provide insurance for our program. Again, I think during agenda prep, we talked about this, this was a very interesting bid year for all of our district-wide insurances. Our current carrier came in at almost three times last year's cost, so we are moving off of that carrier for this year to a new carrier, and we liked this one quite a bit because they guaranteed a rate for two years, which was quite shocking in the insurance environment that we're seeing right now. So, this is some good, good work, good piece of insurance for the district.
What's causing the rise?
The insurance consultant that we work with, I asked that exact same question, and he says inflation and the unknown.
Well.
Caused by?
The unknown?
The pandemic.
The pandemic. Well, it's interesting, you put a cost on the unknown, but we appreciate your checking and shopping around and getting us a better deal, so. Any other questions? Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Next item, Approval of Cyber Liability Cover Rich Insurance.
I move to approve the cyber liability insurance policy effective July 31st, 2021 through July 1st, 2022.
It has been moved.
Second.
And second. Any additional comments, Mrs. Pedder?
This is, now, within our regular insurance package, there is some coverage on cyber. This is additional insurance. This is also becoming, I think we had one vendor that bid on this, a second vendor bid, but we didn't meet the qualifications, and we'll be looking at that next year, 'cause we have been told by this vendor that next year we will have to meet those additional security qualifications to get insurance at all. So, all the districts, I know Suoka is working on this, I know Chris Lockhart is working on this, so we'll be prepared for next year, but this cybersecurity is becoming a bigger and bigger, bigger issue, so.
Okay.
We have good, we have good coverage, this is a good plan, we, we pretty much took the maximum they had to offer, as most districts of our size also did.
Questions?
I just have a comment.
Comment.
A compliment to Mr. Lockhart for the outstanding job he does in protecting us internet-wide. Thank you.
Right, and when you consider the size and the scope of computers and everything we have, that's huge, so we do appreciate that.
I still have a.
Question?
Yes. Was every student having Chromebooks or just about?
Mm-hmm.
How far does this liability coverage go? Does it go if they take the Chromebook home, access websites, maybe the deep web? What is, or is this just for us being attacked, us being the district?
This insurance that we're talking about tonight is the, the attack from outside, the data stealing, compromising, potential, you know, employee and student data, that's what this one is for. The liability on equipment was the previous one we approved in, end of June, and, you know, really doesn't cover Chromebooks, 'cause they're so small of value, you know?
Well, not a, not a, not the equipment, but the access and the damage that you can do with access, outside of school time, etc.
If it impacts the data of the district, that will be this coverage.
What about, I'm asked about a previous coverage, 'cause I was never sure about that.
I'm sorry, can't.
The coverage, okay, I take the Chromebook home, I'm a criminal mastermind, I hack in the fifth third bank, using a Princeton Chromebook, are we covered?
I'm gonna have to ask that question, 'cause my gut says no.
Okay, so we should look into that, correct?
I think that would be criminal on the person doing the act, but I will verify that for you.
Okay, 'cause you have a few thousand of these hanging around outside.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, Mrs. Pedder will check into that. Will you call the roll?
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes. The motion passes. Approval of Service Agreement with Funds for Learning School.
I move to approve the service agreement with funds for learning school, year 2021 through 2022 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved in second. Any comments on this?
Yes, I've asked Chris Lockhart to come up, our Director of Technology, you know, for, you know, education lives in this world of acronyms, so the ECF, if I'd ask a lot of people what that means, it certainly makes sense, it's like one of the acronyms that actually makes sense. The Emergency Connectivity Fund, federal government has given, it will pass out 7.17 billion dollars specifically, Mr. Lockhart, can you talk about why it's important for this funds for learning?
Yes. One of the main purposes of the fund is for connectivity, and so, we are pursuing that, we'll be turning in an application this week, working with this company if they're approved by the board tonight. We plan on pursuing as much as we can to make sure that all of our students and each of our students has that connectivity that they need. This will allow us to apply for some money for those devices that we're currently using to make sure that they're covered. It's also gonna allow us to start a new initiative, where we're gonna try to actually go out into the community and provide, once again, that direct high-band internet to our students in particular. We're really excited about this company, helping us with the ECF fund in particular, and they've been very responsive considering it's such a short window, as well as being instrumental in giving us ideas that we can pursue to go after the funds that are available. And what you're gonna approve tonight will also have them take over as our E-Rate consultant also. Again, based on our interaction with them for the ECF, we're gonna use them for our E-Rate consulting also, to make sure that those ongoing funds that we know are gonna be there, we can maximize those for years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I just wanted to add one thing, that we worked really, really, really hard to make sure our kids were connected. The community rallied around us and worked really, really hard to make sure that we were connected, and this is one of the things that we felt, that if the federal government would step up, we could wait. We could wait and then see what they do, and our kids still want to have connectivity, still want to have devices, and so, I just wanted to publicly thank not only Chris Lockhart, but the Board of Education for believing enough in doing the one-to-one early and doing that. The Board of Education did not do what you guys did, it would've been right now that we would've been able to get connectivity for our kids, a year too late. So, like, sometimes people are like, what does the Board of Education do? The Board of Education changed the lives of all those kids, that's what you did. By your action and approval, when you purchased all those Chromebooks, when you did really crazy, unique things, that's what you do. And it couldn't get done unless you had somebody like Chris Lockhart and an amazing administrative team to follow through and get it done. So, thank you, Chris, and especially the Board of Education.
We do thank you. I mean, it's something that I think we take for granted at Princeton, because we always have access and we always have connectivity, but when you look at other school districts, we know that it's special, so thank you for taking the lead on that, appreciate it. Any other comments or questions? Any other comments or questions? Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Lockhart. Approval of the contract for ALC schools for school year twenty-one, twenty-two.
I move to approve the contract with ALC schools for school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Second.
Comments? Anybody have any questions about it? Okay. Then, Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Approval of agreement with Facilitron Incorporated. Motion, please.
I move to approve the contract, or the agreement with Facilitron Incorporated.
Second.
Has been moved in second. Any comments or questions on, on that one?
Just very quickly, if I may. You know, earlier I mentioned efficiency and the importance of being efficient. And we had a lot of people working very, very hard to make sure that any building rentals, the process, procedures, and all that were followed. And Mr. Frick and his team have done a great job, as well as Mary Slaughter, the Board of Education, and many other people. There's a lot of people I just mentioned. And so, Facilitron actually takes a lot of that out of our hands, automates it, and allows us to be a little bit more fluid, a little bit more nimble to make sure. Now, we still have the final approval process, but all of the information that's ever needed, if businesses or community want to rent out our rooms, our facilities, all that, all that's right on the website. This company handles everything and just sends us the money. We don't lose any money from it. There is an added-on expenditure that people would have to make. This technology is wonderful, we're excited about it, we're also able to delve down deep into work orders. And so, this is yet another way to, to help us with efficiency, and it's, it's awesome. So, Mr. Frick, thank you for bringing that to us.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Pedder? Oh, another? Yes?
What percentage do we get of the fee that they charge? What percentage do we get of the fee that they charge, the user?
So, we have, we have a fee that we charge.
Right.
That we historically have charged. We get one hundred percent of that.
Yes.
So, they charge a fee that they get. So, we get one hundred percent of the fee that we charge.
Okay. And they keep what they charge?
And, yes.
Okay.
Good question. Any other questions? Mrs. Pedder, please call the roll.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Approval of contract with Klashnik and Associates.
I move to approve the contract with, I'm not sure how to say it, Kishnik?
Kishnik.
Associates LLC Viking University Speaker twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Mr. Burton, you want to elaborate?
Sure. Just want to top up and coming speakers. We had an opportunity to see him a couple of different times this year. He's amazing. Our Viking University has really become something to behold. It is professional development for teachers, for staff, by teachers and by staff. When you look at the event, we do bring in some keynotes that add great value. All the keynotes, anybody we bring in, actually, they do featured sessions as well. This is amazing. And so, if you would send people out to try to see him and get the big bang for the buck, it is better to bring in speakers and pay, basically, we're getting eight hundred people at a conference without having to pay eight hundred registrations.
Okay. Mrs. Pedder, would you call the roll?
Dr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
And that motion passes. The next item is discussion of an academic update. Mr. Burton?
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to call up Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Instruction, Tanya West-Wright. She's going to do a presentation and talk a little bit about, and you guys should see it on the screen right here, right in front of you as well. Ms. West-Wright?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just have a few slides to start out with tonight. The first one is about the report card for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. I don't have many updates there because the state has been releasing information to us to let us know that they are going to release the state report card in mid-October. Their normal release is in September, but they have pushed that back and they have just made that announcement that they're anticipating the release of twenty twenty-one, October twenty twenty-one. They will not be assigning grades to any schools or in any categories like normally get different grades. They will not do that. They will not provide value-added rankings, despite we did work through them to do some linkage with the teachers, and they are trying to calculate it, but they will not share those out. Data will not be included in teacher evaluation. Now, we knew that going into it, but they won't be linking any data to teachers. And preliminary percentages cannot be disclosed prior to public release in October. So, but what I did do is that the administrative team has been doing some reflection, and we have been looking at some tentative data. And one of the things that we knew was going to happen, it definitely occurred, the pandemic had an impact on our achievement and growth results. Student achievement maintained or slightly decreased for our English Language Arts. So, being that we had a hybrid schedule where every other week and we all came back, there are some celebrations with that. You know, it could have taken a huge hit, but we saw that English Language Arts was something that the students were able to do better on the hybrid schedule and remote, and able to retain and grow in that subject area a little bit better than math. Math, we saw some more decreases. Many students maintained, but if you talk about where we saw the most, that we have the most challenges, it is math. And probably because you're not able to practice daily, there's multiple reasons that contribute to that. I did forget to mention that English Language Arts, and I wanted to make sure that I mentioned it, the primary grades and learning to read remotely. Our third grade scores were the lowest that we anticipate they, we anticipate that they will be the lowest that we've seen in a while. And that would be that those, many of those students had two interrupted years of education. So, that third grade class, we really want to make sure that we continue to work, and we're so excited to have them all back in person on Thursday. And that is why we truly believe that in-person learning for those primary learners is so critical. And then, we are, like I said, utilizing the released data and planning for the new year. So, we met with the secondary department head today, we talked about the data that is available. The elementary principals are already reviewing that data with their staff. So, there's limited data available. The piece of the data that we rely on most are the itemized analysis of which questions and which standards the students had the most challenges with, and which ones they had the most success with. So, we have that, it's still considered preliminary, but we are looking at that because that really helps us prioritize which standards we need to address each quarter. So, are there any questions regarding the report card?
Just in general, is the third grade, you know, passage still a critical focus area? Have they made any adjustments in that?
The students were able to get the alternative score to not be retained, so they did take away the retention, but we really worked hard to get our students to get the alternative score. So, we used iReady assessment, and most of our students did really well for that. So, I really want to thank the teachers, the students, the parents. Everyone worked hard to make sure that they were getting the best they could, they just didn't have that daily experience with the reading. We, like I said, the, most students were able to move on to fourth grade, they met the alternative score, and those that didn't meet that alternative score, just like any other year, we had the robust summer school that really helped those students and many of those students. Those parents took that very seriously, understanding that in another year, they would have been retained. They really got their children to summer school for the full month, and we're hoping when they come back on twelve, that we'll see that, that they maintain that growth that they made over the summer.
Thank you.
And if I, if I could just add, I refuse to hear any presentation about the state report card to just, just really illustrate again for the community how ridiculous this is. Now, the data gets released already, typically in the middle of September. Ms. West-Wright, I always forget, when do kids take state mandated testing? I always forget.
They take it at the end of April.
So, in, in, in April?
April.
Okay, so let's just think about this right now. We're going to get the results in October, in October, for what they did six months earlier. Now, for the people, and I'm really not trying to be mean or animated, but I'm going to be just for a second, not mean, animated, animated. So, if you're in business, and you're a businessman or businesswoman, and you look and you say, I would never do that if I was in schools, well, you know what? You're right. You're right. So, anybody who thinks that this is ludicrous, you need to get a hold of your legislator and make sure you talk about this because it still is such a dredge on what we do in our schools at a time when we need to spend more time helping kids be more creative and innovative, like we just saw tonight. More kids will work on some remedial skills. That's what we need to do. So, for anybody watching this, when you look at the results or whatever, you're a hundred percent right. And thank goodness that we don't, don't rely on the state report card to have us do what we do. Because we do, like Ms. West-Wright said, we do iReady assessments, we have many other formative assessments we do, and I'm off my soapbox now, but it's just so ridiculous, six months after. It's crazy.
Well, we do appreciate the efforts that, that our teachers are putting into keeping our kids at a level that is successful. Any other comments?
Not regarding the report card. I was asked to give an update on gifted education, so.
Yes.
I will move to that.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? I might have missed it.
Yeah.
But the third grade reading scores, are they included in the report card?
They, they are.
Do we have any preliminary numbers on that?
We're not allowed to say specific numbers for preliminary data until it is released, but we did talk about the percentage of students passing that assessment was lower than in traditional years.
Right.
But many of the students were able to still hit the alternative score to be able to be promoted to fourth grade. And we talked about the number of students that, if there was any hesitation, the principals and the parents, they really collaborated with the teachers to get those students into summer school, so they continue to grow with their reading, and we will make sure that we continue with that as they come back to the school.
Yeah, we usually get good numbers there. Thanks for you guys' hard work. I know it's premature.
Yes.
Okay.
So, for, just an update on our gifted education programming, we wanted to just start that, I would say at the end of the spring of two thousand sixteen, we had an audit by Dr. Jim Delisle, who is a nationally renowned gifted educator. And he came in and talked to us about some things that we needed to do to improve our gifted program. He wanted to make sure that we increased opportunities for identification, that we expanded services, that we continued our acceleration programs. He felt like that's one of the areas that we did our best work in is whole-grade acceleration and some of the opportunities in the middle school for combining the courses. He, he said that we needed to increase our enrichment opportunities, provide targeted professional development, and increase parent support. So, we are really excited to say that we have done those things over the years, and we continue to look at those same areas and make sure that we're growing each year for identification, service, acceleration, and enrichment. So, for identification, I think this was a question we talked about maybe a few months ago. We, we identify students in reading and math, specific academic ability. We do that utilizing the iReady assessment for students in grades one through five, the math assessment for students in grades six through ten now. We normally, this last year was the first year we gave the math assessment to high school students, but they can also qualify utilizing that assessment. They can also qualify for that during ACT for the older students. We also identify students with superior cognitive ability. We use the COGAD assessment, and we administer that to second and fourth grade on a traditional school year. This year, because we were missing so many days with our students, we were on a hybrid schedule, we only gave that to the second grade in May. So, coming back this school year, we're already planning for October. Our new elementary curriculum coordinator, Mrs. LaDora Hill, is working because in October, we're going to test our second grade, our fourth grade, and our fifth grade. Because we have to require full-grade testing to all of those students at least twice in their elementary years, so that is how we're going to catch up on that assessment, and that will identify those elementary students in superior cognitive ability. And so, we'll send out information to the parents regarding the dates of the test so that they know when that is coming. We also identify students in creative thinking ability in second and fourth grade. So, when we get those COGAD assessments back, there's a certain score that we're looking to, to see how those students are doing in a certain area. And what we love about the creative thinking ability is that is a time when we can work with taking teacher recommendations and looking at other assessments. Most of the identification for gifted comes straight from an option. So, the creative thinking allows us to get some more teacher input, recommendations, and look at the student as a whole. So, that's one of those ways that we have increased our identification pool. You are able to identify an art and music ability. We really were moving fast with that when we got shut down for COVID. Our middle school art teachers have been doing some gifted identification with art and were bringing portfolios right when we were shut down. So, we do now have students identified and served in art at the middle school level, and the same for our music teachers. So, those were areas that we had not been identifying. We know we have always had a very talented fine arts program, and we know our students were served and are gifted in those areas. And so, recently, we've started to identify students in those areas and serve them. Again, the pandemic set us back a little bit for that because a lot of the things were in-person or portfolio-based, so we look forward to picking that back up as we all return to the building this year. I already talked about the iReady and the math, and the second and fourth and fifth grade taking the superior cognitive. So, one of the other things we talked about is increasing service. And so, beginning that year after the audit, we started to serve all students that are gifted in reading and math in grades one through five. Prior to that, we had only been serving math pulled out from fourth and fifth grade, so hopefully, the elementary parents have seen an increase in the service provided. To do that, we provided professional development to all elementary teachers in how to differentiate instruction, starting in two thousand seventeen and continuing each year. We have gifted and honors courses in all subjects at the middle school, and we have honors, advanced placement, and international baccalaureate courses at the high school. And one of the amazing things that I saw Principal Bulmer and his team did is they put up the names of all the students that have graduated with an international baccalaureate diploma. I don't know if you saw that, though.
That's fun.
So, that was very exciting because those students worked very hard, and those teachers really take them to the next level. So, acceleration, we get calls often for early entrance into kindergarten, and we have a team of psychologists and our gifted coordinator that work through that. We have the written acceleration plans for eighth-grade algebra students, and then we have the high school advanced placement and international baccalaureate classes in addition to CCP. But usually, we talk about these two programs, we're not talking about gifted. So, as Mr. Burton said, the team that got up here earlier, I had the pleasure of hearing them present, and want to make sure I thank Mrs. Anna Martinez and Mrs. Tricia Roddy for coordinating all of that. And I, as soon as I saw them get up here, I thought about the nail polish that they talked about and the smoothies. So, someone was going to create a special smoothie to help you stay young. That spoke to me. But what we are really going to have to do is restart and reset for the new year. There were so many things that we were doing with Johnson &amp; Johnson, with iSpace, Usalgi Innovation. We had so many stock market games in Pentathlon when we were traveling. A lot of that, we're going to have to restart and reset because most of those opportunities were canceled because of the pandemic. The teachers were doing an awesome job in exposing them to classroom projects and differentiation, but some of that, those really engaging activities and partnerships, we're really looking forward to those coming back. So, I, again, we will reset and restart with that. We will also be resetting and restarting. We have two new gifted teachers coming into the program. We had two retirements from our gifted program. We had a retirement for Mr. Coleman, who was our gifted teacher at the, at Sharonville[1746.36] We had a retirement for Mr. Coleman, who was our gifted teacher at the, at Sharonville and Evendale. So we do have a new teacher that has replaced him, and we had Mrs. Nguyen, who was our gifted teacher at the middle school, who has been replaced. So we do have some new teachers, um, that are coming, they have big shoes to fill, but I know they can do it. Professional development, like I said, that was a huge focus. So many of our teachers, they understand that in order to teach international baccalaureate or to teach any gifted students, you need to have so many hours of professional development each year. So when we kicked off in two thousand and seventeen, we worked closely with Hamilton County ESC in great collaboration with Mrs. Chris Rojas, who was assigned to us as our gifted consultant for the district. Our gifted intervention specialists attended when they had these things, the Ohio Association of Gifted Children conferences in the fall. We hope that we can return to that, because that's where they can collaborate and get all of their ideas. We have different instruction, I talked about that. But one of the things that has really been a hit for our teachers are the gifted book studies. Uh, we've had, even last year, when it was so many other things going on, we had sixty teachers participating in a distance learning playbook book study, um, led by Mrs. Rojas and Mrs. Styles. Um, and those were, how do you engage students? Even were on this hybrid and distance schedule and gave different ideas. We've also done a book study on innovated inside the box and in power. And again, we've had over a hundred teachers participate in that. So the teachers love the professional development, and we take those ideas and we deliver those to our students that are identified as gifted, and to all students that need differentiation in our classroom. I just have a couple more. Um, parent support, we really are trying to make sure that we reach out to the parents with identification letters, because sometimes a child can be identified in one area, but then they take another assessment, and they're identified in another. So maybe they were, were identified as superior cog in second grade, but now they took a math test in fifth grade, and now they're identified in math. So every time that occurs, we send out communication to the families. We let families know when we're going to be giving the test. We've been trying to really bring in the middle school parents and the fifth grade going into sixth grade, so that they know how many advanced study options that are available. And a lot of that was with Mrs. Nguyen, who is no longer here, so we will continue that with our, our new staff members, and we expose them to our Super Saturday events. So those are the improvements that we made in our gifted programming. We still have room to grow, uh, but we're constantly working at that. And if, does anyone have any questions about gifted?
If, if I may just add one thing. You know, getting, uh, outside, having an outside audit was, was huge for gifted, it flat out was. Uh, I remember when I was working with Dr. Delisle, after everything, he says, Tom, quite frankly, I, I'm not seeing what I need to see. And, uh, I said, well, let us have it. And he was gonna do it anyway, but I felt better saying, let us have it. And so really, when we looked at it, and, and very responsive to that, but because of the great need that we had, because of what we did, and you heard, Ms. Westwright, and I, I believe that we're doing it as well. Uh, but I did reach out to Dr. Delisle to come in, you know, trust but verify. And so in subsequent meetings, uh, you perhaps may see a contract to have him come in to be able to do, uh, a final review, if you will, after we made changes. And, uh, if, if he agrees to that, that would be huge, cuz again, nationally renowned, and this is as big as you get in gifted education. So him coming in, uh, that would be amazing. But, uh, you know, Ms. Westwright, you certainly gave a lot of praise to a lot of people, but you had a huge hand in what we did with gifted, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, any other questions or comments?
Yes. Um, you mentioned acceleration, acceleration. Um, and, and I'm thinking along the lines of not necessarily that acceleration, but maybe elongation. And that is, do we have a district policy on all-day kindergarten, and should we? Cuz as I understand it, we have half-day and full-day. And if we want our kids to learn, shouldn't they be in school longer? And I understand there's some parental pushback a little bit, but share with the class.
That would be a board policy.
Understand, understand.
The Princeton Board of Education offers full-day kindergarten, many districts do not even offer that opportunity. So many parents are very excited, and some even actually try to do open enrollment so that they can actually have a full day of kindergarten, where we do offer the physical education, art, and music. I am a proponent of full-day kindergarten, but there are many people that feel like they, they still want that time and that other half-day with their children. So I think the best of both worlds is being able to offer both, uh, for many families, but I am definitely a proponent of full-day and excited that that is something that we offer. And we have an amazing team of full-day kindergarten teachers, and we have amazing day of half-day. I think that's it, too, we have such great half-day teachers, um, that the parents are able to see how much they can get done in half the day, and they feel like they can take them and do the other arts and music and other family things for that last year before they start a full-day program.
But if it was up to you? You would have full day?
If it was up to me, I would have full day.
Okay.
I got a question. Sure. I was just going to say, I really enjoyed this presentation. And I think the key message I'm getting out of it, and I hope others do too, is that Princeton cares about you from the cradle to the grave. And this even shows me, and I think I've heard someone say it before, that even if a child is under the age of four, maybe three, I don't know what number it was, maybe Dr. Phillips said it, but, but, uh, even if the child is not even preschool age exactly, they can contact the Princeton School District to see if their child is ready or needs extra help, you know, way before preschool, is that, am I wrong, I'm right?
Yes, they're definitely helping grow agencies and other, um, child-friendly opportunities that we do to reach out to parents so that they know that they can start contacting us. And, uh, Mrs. Teresa Warren does a fabulous job coordinating that.
Yes, Ms. Warren, yes, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Possible policy, I just.
The, the, the only thing I just wanted to piggyback a little bit was that for, uh, three, it's, it's more for those, uh, students, not from a gifted perspective, but have, uh, pretty significant, uh, learning issues, that, that would be the case.
Yeah, and it would be a situation where as a parent, not having the expertise or, or, uh, specialty in learning disabilities, they could come to the school to learn whether their child needed the extra help or not. Cuz most parents, I don't know, maybe some parents would know, maybe some wouldn't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we move on to treasurer's report.
I have just one quick hitter, but it's good news. Um, Kent Cashell from RBC called and visited, and we are going to have another opportunity to refund some of our debt. So we're gonna start that process, and the savings to the district taxpayers will be about two point one seven million. So, um, Brad Rui is, um, the bond counsel, he'll start preparing resolutions. Uh, Kent would like to come present, of course, as Kent always does. I told him, the board always enjoys hearing from Kent, especially when he delivers this good news. So we'll start that process, uh, very soon, and I believe you pass one resolution.
Okay, good, that is good news, thank you for that. Mr. Burton, superintendent's report.
Thank you. We had a wonderful new staff orientation today, so thanks for the board who were able to make that. Just as a reminder, opening convocation is tomorrow. Uh, it's gonna be in two different places. Uh, we will be here in beautiful Matthews Auditorium, both, uh, downstairs as well as upstairs. But ours is gonna have a, a spot for, uh, all staff who maybe not feel comfortable yet to be in very close confines, to, to watch it on, uh, a telecast, if you will. All employees, each employee, will be here tomorrow in attendance. Uh, and, uh, again, just for those staff that are watching this, uh, you know, we are, you know, I'm very societist from, from Chris, especially the new CDC guidelines. I take off my face mask, I'll put it right back on, uh, for the staff, especially when they're out and about. There still is that recommendation, too, and I see the cabinet is up here, and the administrative team, all has masks on as they sit, uh, within three feet from each other, so that's great. Uh, but opening convocation, so the board, if you could be here tomorrow around eight o'clock, that'd be great in the morning. The new staff is absolutely amazing, Dr. Jameson and his staff did a bang-up job, it was really well-attended. It was great, I had the opportunity to, uh, get on the bus and do building tours, which was, uh, an amazing experience. We have a speaker, you guys approved Chris Singleton, who is amazing. Uh, so excited for him to deliver a powerful message to the staff. But tomorrow night, seven AM, excuse me, seven PM, at Matthews Auditorium, Chris Singleton will be here, uh, with a great presentation called Love Thy Neighbor. His story is unbelievably powerful that you do not want to miss. So I'm really hopeful that the entire board is here, our administrators, our teachers, our community. Um, let's make it uncomfortable, cuz there's, the whole place is packed, and, uh, I pull on Chris Lockhart to set up some, uh, ancillary sites. So, uh, we'd love to, uh, have everybody come out again, seven PM tomorrow night. You know, we continue to work on partnerships, and, you know, I just wanted to highlight one thing very quickly. So Kroger, fifth-largest company in the world, uh, headquarters in the great, beautiful town of Cincinnati, city of Cincinnati. We've created a program called Kroger Next Gen Academy, and that was all last year. Even during the pandemic, still met virtually, still had opportunities. And Ms. Key has done a great job, as well as Ms. Martinez, to really kinda grow that program. And so with that being said, uh, you know, there's some, you know, a lot of people are really excited about we're doing our business partnership program. So Spectrum News on August twenty-fifth will be here, uh, and featuring Princeton and doing a big story. Uh, Mrs. Roddy, do we know exactly when WLWT is gonna do the story? Oh, for the, for the business partnership, sorry? So before, before that, so a lot of people are looking at this, and again, this business partnership program is about addressing a need in this region, it's the workforce need. Uh, we know there's a deficit, and so we're really excited about this, so we continue. So any business, uh, any business leader out there, please let us know if you, uh, would like to partner with us. We have over five hundred business partners, just met with Standard Arrow, and really excited about trying to create perhaps an academy there as well. There's a couple of very quick things about a reopening. I know I mentioned masks, uh, earlier, but I'll talk about that a little bit deeper here in a second. But I just wanna remind everybody that all of our protocols for cleaning, every single one that we have, is still in place. Not changed it, not planning on changing that, that's something that we're gonna consistently do. We believe that we made a huge difference because of cleaning desks during the course of the day, cleaning high-touch areas, making sure that we cleaned each room with the electrostatic, uh, devices that we have. And then on top of that, even bringing in at one time a month, cleaning, uh, solution, which allows, uh, it's administered by, by an outside company, but they come in and they do this, and it's supposed to kill germs for sure for thirty days. But, uh, Mr. Frick, do you remember what they said to us when they were presenting to us? It, so it kills bacteria and germs beyond thirty days? They do thirty days to make sure that they could say, huh, it works for thirty days. Uh, so we're really, uh, appreciative for Mr. Frick and his team, and all the teachers and staff for making sure we keep the place clean, and, and COVID, and, and germ-free the best that we possibly can. Also, and sanitizers, all that, all that's still gonna be available, all-in-all rooms. Uh, masks will be provided for teachers, masks are gonna be mandated, are mandated on the buses through September thirteenth by the Center for Disease Control, they mandated it. And so, anybody coming on the bus, you must wear a mask. Now, because maybe some people are, threw their masks away over the summer and said they didn't need to worry about it anymore, uh, we have masks that will be on each bus, uh, but students will be required to do that. Uh, if, if there's a philosophical difference, uh, you, you're not gonna be riding on the bus. So the same goes true for schools. We wanna make sure that pre-K through six students are masked up right now. Uh, I've had some great conversations with some, uh, community members who, no matter what I did, I can't win, so it's okay. So I focus on data, I talk to people, that's what we do, we move very, very deliberately. Done that in every situation all throughout. So, uh, I get influenced by when I talk to the county health commissioner. I get influenced when I talk to our team, I get influenced when I talk to Dr. Fagans with what they say. Uh, it is everyone's right to give opinions and to send emails and all that, which I welcome. Quite frankly, didn't receive a ton of emails, one way or the other. I did receive some thank you emails, so for those that said thank you, I appreciate it. But I've got a couple people that aren't happy with the face mask mandate. But here's what we're trying to do, this is what we know. We know that if kid, people wear face masks, all right? Especially if they're around people, it's way better if they're in close proximity, we know that. We also know that kids will not have to ever quarantine if they're vaccinated. So today, I spoke to WLWT about our vaccination clinics, which is a personal choice. We're not mandating that, we're saying that if you want it, we're providing these wonderful opportunities. Last Saturday, this Saturday, August twenty-first, three clinics in a row, here. And we talked about the value of it being here, because people feel more comfortable, perhaps, coming to Princeton. So we had several people that got vaccinated last Saturday, hopefully that number will increase if people feel comfortable. Uh, with all that being said, uh, we know that kids don't have to quarantine if they're vaccinated, even if they're around somebody who has COVID, per, per the guidelines of the state of Ohio. That's what they say. Also, the guidelines say that if you wear a mask, and I'm putting mine on right now, but if I wear a mask and someone is in, within six feet, and they have COVID, they weren't wearing a mask, or they were wearing a mask, I still don't have to quarantine. Now, part of me says that's gonna change. Part of me says that that current guideline is gonna change, but it hasn't right now. So as we go into school on Thursday, mandatory face masks for pre-K through six. One of the, uh, had a great conversation with a community member today, who said, well, what about seventh and eighth graders, Tom? They're gonna be around the sixth graders. To which, it's true, but in middle school, there's a separate schedule from sixth grade to, from seventh and eighth grade. By and large, there's very little interaction, by and large. On top of that, again, it does not the greatest mitigating effect. If you're concerned, wear a mask, wash your hands, do all that stuff. All of those practices, which has kept many of us from getting, not COVID, but just in general, from getting the flu every year, because we wash our hands, we're around people, we're sneezing, all that stuff, we're, we're taking precautions. So the mask is a beautiful extra precaution, and quite frankly, frankly, I continue to hear the numbers are going up and up and up and up. So there will not be a face mask mandate from the governor, or from any health commissioners. Unfortunately, that is on the schools, as you guys have read about and heard in the news. So I'm just telling the entire community to stay tuned. I have a meeting, a conference call, as I do every Friday, with local superintendents, Dr. Fagans from Mercy Health, as well as Doc, or Greg Kesterman from Hamilton County Public Health. I'm also talking to City of Springdale Health Commissioner Matt Clayton all the time as well, including when he was on vacation, he was kind enough to, to get back to me when I had a question. So based upon all that data, all that input, I'm not a doctor, and if you are a doctor and you send me information, I respect your medical opinion. But right now, many of our parents that I've heard from, they're not doctors. They see the same information that I see, and it's scary, it is. But right now, we're moving forward methodically, we know that our kids need to be in school. Uh, everything that I know has been out there. Uh, thanks to Tricia Roddy, we put together some quick communique to get out there in the community. We will continue to do that, to provide information. But right now, it's gonna be an awesome day tomorrow, when we welcome back the staff, Thursday, when we welcome back the kids. And schools were built to have kids and staff working collaboratively to help them get stronger and better. That's my report.
Thank you. Any other, and comments, Mr. Burton, Mr. John, Simon's?
Just to be clear, uh, we have a lot of athletic events coming up, uh, most of them are outdoors. But if parents or vendors come into the building, what is the Princeton mask policy?
Uh, let me, let me just say that all of what I just said is for indoors, that's what I said, for indoors. When any visitors come in, we want them all to wear masks.
Is it mandatory?
It is strongly encouraged per the CDC and Ohio Department of Health for adults to wear face masks or face coverings. So it is, we are strongly recommending, and we have, we have, uh, signs all over the place that that's what we're doing. Now, from visitors' perspective, I know, and I know my team's looking at me, so we got, we gotta be transparent with this whole thing. So if I'm misrepresenting Dr. Jameson, what was the final verdict that we talked about? That we are recommending. That we are recommending, or, sorry, we're mandating anybody coming into school, wear masks? So, anybody coming into school or, now, we have to understand, there's a little ambiguity, I guess, because I want to be very, very clear, outside is outside. So, there is no mask mandate. Inside, so if you come, very clearly, if you come for water polo, for volleyball, for anything inside, you're going to have to wear a mask for all visitors. Now, opposing teams probably are not watching this. Several of the schools may not philosophically believe in that, but they're not going to be let in. That's it. You have to wear a mask. And we're asking people to make sure. Now, you know, there's so much information, too, that changes. But right now, for me to do this, if I'm in class, even if I'm around people, I could do that for a short period of time. Where before, they said mask breaks needed to take place outside. So, if I put my face mask back on after that short break, that's okay for all the guidelines. That's what the medical experts are saying, not Tom Burton. So, there could be times when you see kids have their masks off because they're taking a face mask break. That's okay. But when people come in, there's a big difference. Not that I anticipate any, you know, potential visitors from other schools watching this board meeting, but a face mask break is not for two and a half hours during a volleyball match or water polo or whatever. And those are the events we have inside in the fall. And we're going to wait to see. It'll be interesting to see, quite frankly, what happens on September 14th with face masks on all flights and buses and all that stuff. So, we'll see what happens then. But I would suppose it'll probably be extended as the numbers continue to go up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other comments? All right, we thank you, Mr. Burton, for that report. All right, at this time, I make a motion that we go into executive session under Section 12122-G1 to consider the personnel, the compensation of a public employee, also employment and dismissal according to the Ohio Revised Code.
Second.
It has been moved in second. This will be our last action of the meeting night. There will be no action taken after the executive session. And we will return to close out the meeting. Ms. Petter, would you call the roll?
Mrs. Wyder?
Yes.
Mrs. Cleveland?
Yes.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Simons?
Yes.
Dr. Hopkins?
Yes. And that motion passes. We will retire to Mr. Frick's office. Thank you.